So we're very late, I apologize for that. We had all our technology in order. But we were locked out of the room, so. Digital. The working group on digital equity. Didn't have physical keys to get into the committee room, but we're here now. So, uh, let's get started. I'm here with Dr. Robinson and Charlie Knight. And I see that we've also got, trying to get everybody in the waiting room admitted. Uh, a ton of our other members here. See Justin and Giselle and Roberta and Will and. That Alex. Yep, and Jean. So, uh, this is our second meeting. I printed some agendas.
Ooh, wonderful.
For everybody here. And I'm gonna start by just going over the agenda of what we'd like to do today. And then we can get right into it. So the first is, I have, uh, proposed three informational updates. One is, um, I'm hoping Dr. Robinson will talk a little bit about the 1.5 million dollar MBI award for the Western Mass Alliance for Digital Equity that was recently announced. Uh, also, uh, Dr. Robinson circulated to the committee a variety of materials on the 27th of April. And I'm gonna give him an opportunity just to talk about those items and what they are right here. And, uh, and then thirdly, under information, uh, Roberta Walker Kilkeny asked me to do some research into whether the city has any pending grant applications with the US Department of Commerce, and we'll talk about that. So those are the informational items. And then the other two items after that I'd like to achieve today are we, uh, we previously asked Archbishop Timothy Paul and Dr. Robinson, um, to, uh, talk about proposed workflow for the committee and what we could hope to achieve and an order for doing that and hope to hear from Dr. Robinson and potentially Archbishop if he's able to join us on those. And then the last item is, we discussed at the last meeting, breaking into subcommittees uh, and coming up with some content-based subcommittees and making assignments for that. And then we'll adjourn. So, let's start. Uh, Dr. Robinson, if you wanna talk to us about those items, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. Councilman, I will go right into it. Hi folks. Um, for folks that, uh, didn't see the press, uh, MBI Mass Broadband Institute, which is a sub-department of the Mass Technology Collaborative. They're, that's a quasi-state agency, and so they disperse and distribute, uh, state funds. Mass Broadband Institute, I'm gonna call it MBI, MBI for short. They were, uh, responsible for connecting, um, 96% of the unconnected cities and towns in Massachusetts to the, to broadband. And so they have, I think, out of all of the communities in Massachusetts, maybe four that still are yet to be connected. They've shifted their focus from, uh, uh, infrastructure and laying cable to digital equity. Um, and so we've been involved with them as a region, um, the Alliance for Digital Equity is a regional coalition. We've been involved with them for probably the last, uh, two or three years. Uh, so the Alliance is three years old. Um, and, um, uh, we've been involved probably for the last two years with MBI. MBI has a, um, several programs. They have a program for municipal digital equity planning. They have this program for digital equity partnerships. And the digital equity partnerships are to deliver digital, uh, skills, digital resources, uh, broadly to, uh, typically populations that are most at risk of experiencing digital inequities. And so in their, um, grant announcement, their grant award to the Alliance, and that award was for 5.1 million dollars. Now, it sounds like a lot of money, so first of all, divide that by four counties because the Alliance covers, uh, Hampshire, Franklin Hampshire, Hampton, and Berkshire, so divide that by four. And then divide that again by about 30 organizations that are involved in digital skills training. Will be involved in the various projects, and so that money gets dispersed and gets, uh, um, uh, spread out, uh, pretty quickly, so it's not like there's a big bucket of money to draw from. It's pretty much accounted for, and we're gonna deliver four basic programs. One program is called the Modernization of Public Spaces. So a library, a community center, a city park, uh, could be wired for Wi-Fi so that, uh, occupants and people coming there would have access, uh, to the Wi-Fi. So that's modernization of public spaces. We have a second program called Connectivity for Economic Hardship. And so anyone that is experiencing economic hardship, they can't afford to be connected. Uh, typically folks that may be homeless or living in shelters. It could be, uh, uh, new, uh, Americans, immigrant populations that, uh, is, are just suddenly, but again, are not necessarily connected. Uh, it could be someone, um, who, uh, for a lot of circumstances is left their houses, living in a domestic homeless shelter. It needs to be connected, doesn't have any connectivity. So that one program, the Connectivity for Economic Hardship, will cover a whole range of folks. Uh, modernization is particularly directed at nonprofits and organizations and potentially municipalities. The third program, which is the largest, is digital skills training. And so in that program, we are working with libraries to, um, reinforce and support what they're doing. I was just educated by Charlie Knight over here around the library's, uh, loner program for housespots and, and computers, and he says they probably could use more resources, so we might be able to support libraries in that area. There'll be visual skills training where folks will be enrolled in, uh, programs. And some of the training programs, we will have the ability to, uh, give someone a device at, at training. So they get their six weeks or however long the training lasts, and then they leave with a device that they, uh, they will have, uh, uh, on their own. Uh, we have a program for connecting people to the internet. So the, uh, portable connectivity program provides low-income residents $30 a month um, uh, as an investment in their Wi-Fi. And in some instances, that actually covers the full cost of Wi-Fi. Uh, in some instances, that may reduce, reduces someone overall bill by $30. So, uh, so that's, uh, the fourth program. So we're supporting folks to get enrolled in that program. It's not as easy as it seems on TV sometimes. So we, we provide, uh, counselors and outreach to assist people in getting, uh, in, enrolled in that, that ACP program. Um, so connectivity, modernization, digital skills training, and ACP, the outreach and enrollment, those are the four programs that we'll be deploying across, uh, these four counties. Um, Springfield and/or all of Hampton Counties included, uh, in that, um, initiative. For your information, Springfield is a gateway city. And so gateway cities get special treatment in this program and other programs. That is that, uh, all residents in a gateway city are eligible for those resources. If I deliver these programs elsewhere, you have to qualify for the program based on income. But because Springfield is a gateway city, 100% of the residents here qualify. So that's a, a bonus both in terms of how we deliver the program, um, as well as for people that live in Springfield, Holyoke, Chicopee, um, and, uh, Pittsfield. Yeah. So that's the, that's the program. Uh, a lot more I can tell you about it, but that's the basic program. Um, we're currently in the process of writing contracts. And hopefully by June, July, we'll be actually delivering, uh, services. Uh, some of those services are happening right now with some limited resources that we have. Uh, Wayfinders right now is, uh, providing digital skills training, um, for, uh, residents in Holyoke and Springfield. But again, very small program, just getting started.
That's tremendous.
Yeah, that is really tremendous. Any questions?
Questions?
I guess what you're saying is that the normal requirements for some of this, that people would have to do individually. Because we're a gateway city, that's. Just 'cause you're.
Everybody, everybody in Springfield, yeah, so it's, it's like your Lando example, but let's move it opposite. Everybody in Springfield qualifies. If you were outside of Springfield, then folks have to qualify person by person by person. But because of residents in Springfield, everybody in the city qualifies.
We need to make sure every resident knows that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely. So I guess my only question would be, what, is there anything this group can do to support that work?
Um, yeah.
We don't have 5.1 million dollars. We don't have those resources, but is there something we can do to contribute or elevate that work?
Yeah, so the reason I'm on the committee part is because, uh, we don't know all of what we need to know about what the needs are. So, uh, Charlie Knight here just gave me, uh, a lesson on housespots and computers in the Sloan program going out of the library. Now, we're planning on doing something like that. I now know what I'm talking about because I, I had, I had a first time, a firsthand, uh, uh, beneficiary of the program telling me about how it works and, uh, the importance of connecting it to something like a library in order to manage the resource.
And, and let me be totally honest with all this, we're, we're, we're truthful. I really thought I was to bring back for renewal my hotspot and Chromebook on the 10th of May. I have a weak link. It was the 3rd of May. So I could show him how they had shut it off on May. It, it, it was frozen. The internet was frozen, the other one was frozen. And it went, this is the second time this has happened in my life, I think. But the point is that. It, it, it was an example of how you have control.
Great teaching moment.
Yes, a great teaching moment. I was so happy because otherwise, all I have to do is show him, yes, it worked. That's, that wouldn't, that, he knows that. Right. But be able to show how you can have people have to interact with you regularly is what just happens with the library alone. And with that, and I can see with other things how we would want that interaction to occur, especially if you were doing some sort of teaching or if you were interacting with how things were learning, how, what problems you were having, et cetera. Well, they're gonna interact with you if the device doesn't work.
That's right. Yeah. That's right. That's a great point. Okay, so thank you. Um, are there any other questions for Dr. Robinson about that? Uh, oh, uh, Roberta?
Yes, thank you. That was a really, um, interesting and worthwhile presentation. I think one of the things that we might do to assist with your effort is to find out what other organizations, agencies, et cetera, in Springfield may have programs. Um, for example, at the Raymond Jordan Center, they have computer literacy courses. I don't know about the other, um, senior centers that come under the city. Um, but I think, you know, a lot of those programs could probably use mutual assistance, you know? One, for us to know that they exist and to publicize them, and then perhaps for the initiative that you're already involved with to, um, be able to provide additional equipment and, and so on.
Great, yeah, yeah, um, uh, thanks, thanks for that. I'm planning on participating in an event at the Raymond Jordan Center. I think it's May, oh, when is it, this? All right, I'll, I'll send you the notice on it, but we're, um, the Public Health Institute is doing a technology fair, and I'm one of the presenters. And we're gonna be talking about a program called Cyber Seniors, and that's a program that trains young, uh, uh, folks, uh, high school, college students to provide cyber mentoring, uh, uh, to skills training to older adults. And I wanna see if I can get older adults that would be willing to join that program to be a part of a peer-to-peer training where seniors are helping other seniors learn, uh, the internet. So I will be there and, um, would love to put you on our team, um, to help feed this through, if you're available.
Yes, thank you. Um, you might also consider a, what do they call those things? A grandparents program? You know, a lot of those seniors might be able to assist their grandchildren with, um, digital literacy so that their use of educational technology in their schools is enhanced. So it can be a two-way street, not just the younger people showing the older ones, but us older ones showing our, our younger relations.
Exactly. Thank you. Thanks for that.
I'm thinking of something a little bit down the road. We were talking about the program, and after the program was over, they got the device. I had a similar thing happen with the commentary program. However, it was created during the pandemic, and my device decided to stop working. And I'm wondering if there isn't something with beneficial that we might help people, especially those with very little income, to be able to find a spot where their devices can be repaired.
Yeah, so, Charlie, you are, I'm gonna hire you to work with me. So, so part of what we wanna do is provide tech support.
Yeah.
When we get out a device, because that's what we've heard, right? Is that I don't want, uh, we had organizations, they don't wanna give them away because they, they don't know how to support them. So we're gonna try and do something like that. So you're, you're totally on target, Charlie.
Great. Uh, Will?
So, uh, just something that I caught actually today on my way home, and honestly, I'm, I'll look into it a little bit more if nobody really knows anything about it, but, uh, so I saw a tent out front of the VOC, the Valley Opportunity Council, and they had a big sign up saying that they were giving away tablets today from, from this tent. It was a program that I hadn't heard of. Um, so I was just wondering if anybody was kind of aware or knew anything about that particular program.
Uh, no, that's news to me. I would love to know what they're doing. Um, that was Valley Opportunity Council?
Yeah, that was, uh, right outside of Valley Opportunity Council on, on State Street. They were, you know, they had a big sign up saying giving out tablets plus, um, you know, to residents in the area, so.
If, if this is like a program that was there before, it's connected to it with internet address and trying to sign you up for this internet address that we're talking about. And the, if you go through this program, they give you a free tablet.
I see. And I think Jean had her hand up as well. Jean?
Hi, yes, I did. You know, I saw that in front of Springfield Partners for Community Action, and Will, that may be the same place. We're just calling it by a different name, um, that said tablet and data. And I took that to be one of those semi-scammy things where, you know, sign up for free. Um, you know, your phone service or something like that. So I think that's something that we should be cautious of. It's, it, it's a good location, I think. Very, very visible, obviously. At least two of us saw it, um, with a lot of high traffic there. But just to make sure that it's really obvious that it's something legit.
Yeah, I, I.
It may have been. I, you know, I don't know. You made me think, Will.
Yeah, Jean, uh, uh, in my meeting with Bishop, um, Bayman, he, uh, identified there were a number of these places showing up on corners. And they were, um, ripping people off, basically. There was signing folks up. Sometimes folks would walk away. Uh, have been signed up by them, uh, when they then tried to enroll in ACP. Their ACP had always been, already been used by one of these other companies. So I'm not sure if this is what's going on there or not, but, uh, um, it does, uh, warrant paying attention to.
Oh, that's, yeah, that is extremely concerning, and I would say if that type of activity is going on, we should consider getting maybe the Office of Consumer Protection involved or something.
Section 93A, section 2A. Made and switch. I used to work for the Attorney General's Office in that section. Yeah. And, and the only.
Triple damages, as you're aware, Charlie.
Yeah, and, and the only key to that law is that it found guilty. All, all sections of that company must cease to operate in Massachusetts. Mm-hmm. And most likely, she is a robot, so I can't do that. So, I mean, they, they immediately complied with the law very quickly. But I, I don't like this when I hear that possibly people, uh, uh, signed up and then find out that their, their, their APC is used by somebody else. That, that, that's, that's just.
Or, or they don't know they've been signed up, and then they try and sign up, they find out that they've already been logged against the council.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, um, thank you for that. Uh, I know ultimately, one of the deliverables we wanna leave with today is talking about subcommittees and assignments and plan for the rest of the year, but there are two other items they wanted to give us a chance to talk about before we do that. And the first is some of the materials that Dr. Robinson sent around on the 27th. So why don't you just talk to us a little bit about those?
Why don't, why don't I do these, do those two pieces at the same time, because they sort of go together?
Oh, great.
So, uh, folks got a, oh, this is what I sent, okay. So, tell you all of what I sent you. So I sent you, um, so the program I described came to you as, um, uh, uh, sort of a narrative of what our partnership program is. So if you read this, you, 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 I should have known, I should have looked at this earlier, I could have just referred you to this. So if you read this, that's what we're doing. Uh, the other material is really just sort of background material. I gave you this one big document, which was a needs assessment. We completed, uh, the digital divide. Um, again, I'm, hopefully you didn't print it out, you looked at it online, but, um, uh, that was the, the, the one document. And then the document I wanna refer to, and I use that to bridge my assignment for today. Uh, I sent you this framework for municipal digital equity planning. And so I, I've referenced this a couple of times. So Mass Broadband Institute has two basic programs that are operating right now. They're doing the partnership program, which is the grants we receive for, for delivering on these skills training. And then they're doing planning for digital equity skills and digital equity issues and broadband. Uh, so there's a, what's called a DEA app. Uh, digital equity app, it's a federal app, and then there's B, broadband equity adoption and deployment app. I think I got it right. Uh, the digital equity app and the B app, both of those are federal programs. They require that, that the state develop a statewide plan for digital equity. Uh, and that statewide plan would be the basis for the state accessing additional dollars. So right now, we know that the state will receive approximately, uh, just about $100 million in the, in the future, 24, in 2024 or 2025, to be distributed to address either broadband issues or infrastructure issues, as well as more digital equity skills training. Um, the state must have a plan to do that. All right, and so this one program, the Framework for Digital Equity Planning, is a product that was produced by, gave a guy by the name of Michael DeCara. Michael's working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Council, and they are providing consultation and support to municipalities as they do digital equity planning. So they're a potential resource for us. And then I sent out my assignment to you, um, uh, coming out of the last, uh, committee meeting. And that was really to, what would the process look like for digital equity planning at, for Springfield, and how might we go about developing it? And, uh, so I said there's sort of two priorities. We need to develop a plan for planning. And so this is the broad outline. Uh, yeah, this is a broad outline for what that would be. So I sent that to folks by email at last minute, so hopefully you, you have it in front of you, you had a chance to take a look at it. Uh, so, uh, my proposal is that we actively secure planning support, uh, from, um, Pioneer Valley Planning Council, where they can assign consultants to work with us in terms of developing a planning framework and actually completing the, completing the plan. So they, that brings resources to the table, um, and supports, uh, uh, our, our tasks. Uh, we might need to secure some additional resources, and I call them people, places, things, activities. So imagine this, if we were really ready to go out and do what's called a charrette, uh, and that has engaged our community in a conversation on digital equity, we could have teams deployed at the pancake of breakfast and collect thousands of interviews, or hundreds of interviews anyway, around the needs of people. But we don't, we're not ready for that, but again, uh, this notion of completing, uh, of engaging the community and then completing, um, uh, these charrettes is something that, again, this consulting team could support us in doing. And the additional resources, as where I was going with this, is that, you know, it, it, it may not be money. It may be people that will support some of the additional outreach, uh, things or activities that we can take advantage of, that we know people are coming to, and that we can use that to collect additional data. And the assumption there is we're in what I call in this process, the discovery phase. We're asking people what their needs are. We're centering our plan based on the needs of people that are most impacted by digital inequities or digital device. So we're asking people first. We're going out, we're spending time, and we're asking folks what the needs are. Uh, and then we're organizing that, that information into solutions. Uh, and we do that, uh, 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 around building work groups, uh, uh, around specific topics to begin to solve for, for solutions. And when we hear from people what they need, and then we design, uh, work groups to actually address those needs. And then in the last part of the process, what I call the do-something process, please, with this committee, we're not, um, creating programs, but we're actually creating a plan. That plan will then be the basis for accessing some of those state resources when they come down the pipe for implementing some of those activities. So if we have a plan in place, then you, uh, we become very attractive as a municipality for implementing portions of the, uh, portions of the state plan as well as accessing resources. They're gonna be, um, uh, devoted and matched to that plan. Uh, the risk is if we're not part of that planning process, if they don't have us in front of them, then our, you know, we, our, our chances are minimized or not as great as being able to access the dollars. So there's a symmetry in terms of our planning efforts connecting with what's happening, uh, at the state level. Um, so that's the plan for planning that I suggest that we consider adopting as a priority. Um, and then the second portion of that is that, uh, in some ways, we need to be sure that what we do is, um, uh, in, in partnership with the mayor's office, because the mayor is gonna be, have to sign that state plan or the digital plan that goes to the state government. So we need some kind of, uh, alignment there, uh, as well. Uh, so that's the priority. Now, I listed those, and I have by-when dates or by dates. And we need to figure out how long this process takes us. And, um, and, um, you know, sort of a dedicating, um, identifying responsible. Now, I don't wanna get too detailed. We need to figure out by when we wanna complete this, and then we can build out a more detailed work plan. Or I should say, consultants that we're working with would come up with a more detailed work plan and support our activity. Um, so that's, that's my recommendation for the group.
So do you think, Dr., that, uh, creating working groups to help tackle maybe these first seven items under priority one? And talking about that is a good way to proceed? I mean, like, for example, securing the planning consultants and facilitators using the MBI grant, that's probably PVPC.
PVPC, yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, we could assign some folks to assist with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then securing additional resources as needed? Well, can't really do that just yet unless people have ideas about how to do it. Uh, because I imagine the consultants will help facilitate some of that. Develop a community engagement plan. We could start to work on that. I mean, we know the community, we can get a group to do that. Um, and then, I guess, number four is sort of implementing the community engagement plan, right? That's going out and getting some of the information, I don't know.
Yeah, so I, I think items one and three are things you could probably do.
One and three?
Yeah, for sure. So someone, I mean, whoever group that's, um, um, meets with PVPC, uh, understands digital equity planning framework, and sort of leads that effort. And then, um, uh, this idea of, um, imagining, uh, how we wanna, um, connect with our community. So we could do the community engagement family, could do pieces of that.
I agree.
Without getting too far. And then on the, the, when you get to the four through seven, we're really asking the, the broader community to come into an event that we've created, so, uh.
Like a charrette.
Yeah. Are there any, are there any ideas for additional resources or additional priorities? What Dr. Robinson is laying out is a, is a focus on securing future funding for the city of Springfield for digital equity through focusing our efforts on creating a digital equity plan. I think that that would be an extremely good use of our time, and if at the end of this, uh, committee's work, at the end of the year, we have some semblance of that achieved. Uh, committee's work at the end of the year, we have some semblance of that achieved. I think that that would be a tremendous deliverable, and that. Quite honestly, that could take all of our efforts between now and the end of the year to do that one thing, to do a plan.
Yeah, and and the, and NBI is under the gun to produce a. Um, their own plan, and they get input from municipalities by October thirty-first.
That's a state plan.
That's a state plan. And so there's a lot of energy on the state to do something immediately today. So we can actually. Uh, working with them to get their plan met, also be collecting information for our own plan. So I think there's a, a nice. Partnership that we could, we we could create with NBI.
Okay. So, in summary, in my own non-technical terms. Uh, Dr. Robinson is proposing that we focus our efforts on helping get a digital equity plan for Springfield. And that by the next meeting, we break into two groups. One that would be focused on helping facilitate, uh, consultants through PVPC and NBI, primarily PVPC, to assist with this. And then another group that would help develop a community engagement plan for how we could, uh, in the future coming months. Facilitate some measure of public input on digital equity in Springfield. Did I get that right?
Got it right.
Okay, so does, how does everybody feel about that? Let's have a discussion about that and whether or not that's a good direction. Anybody online have any questions or things to add about that? Now, does that sound good? I think that's a terrific, uh, approach.
Well, and let me just spark with one other piece of information. I I should have should have led with this. Because NBI has to complete their plan by the end of October. And they're, uh. Also mandated by the federal government to have high levels of community engagement. So the, both the DEA app and the B app require the disadvantage for those populations experiencing. Uh, digital inequities be included in the planning process. So anyone that's living in one of our low-income neighborhoods, anyone that's homeless, anyone that is a new immigrant, uh, all the. So they're going to actually provide some funding this summer to support outreach events, to collect information from those groups. So we might, we might be able to dip into that, help them. Collect the information, but also it it fuels our own, our own planning efforts. So, um, I, again, I'm not sure what that looks like, but, you know, I I'll be able to get the committee some additional information. And we can position ourselves to be, if not to be a candidate, to shape where the money goes so that it's used in so for our.
As a formerly homeless person, it is amazing. Many years ago, there was a program that provided you with voicemail. That's all it was, was voicemail. But nobody needed to know that you were homeless. And and likewise with this, in getting jobs and stuff, you have the email, you can do contact, nobody needs to know, and. We can. Get out of under being that. And and I see the value in this, and I see also that. Maybe when we put a document or two together, that might be able to be sent out when the city sends out things like taxes or whatever, when they send out notices. That just clearly say how you can apply for something, because we are a gateway city. Let the people know where they can make the application. And maybe with some of this money, we will have somebody that they could come down to City Hall or and be helped to make those applications.
I just got a letter in the mail from the mayor, actually. Did you get that, uh, a week or so ago that was talking about? Oh, I don't have it. I'll get a copy of it for the next meeting. I got, it was on city stationary, and it was from, did anybody else get that letter that's on?
The ever-source one?
Yeah, the ever-source.
Yeah, I've gotten that a couple of times, although it annoys me, it's addressed to my spouse, not to both of us, but in any case.
Mine was just addressed to me, not my spouse, I know.
Yeah, um. Anyway, um, yeah, saying, take advantage, get a mass save, um.
Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, so, but the reason I bring it up is because whatever resources were utilized to do that, it comes in a city stationary envelope. It's not going to necessarily help us with the houseless population, but. It is a way of communicating that could come from the city. We could get the mayor's office to buy in and say. Here's the things that you need to know about and pursue some grant funding to get the posted or something to do it.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, so if we're going to break into two groups, and the first group is going to be, secure the strategic planning consultants. I think for each group, we need someone who's going to be responsible for, uh, in the course of the next month. Making sure that that group does what they're going to do and reporting back with minutes. Because Dr. Robinson has these relationships, would you be willing to be the one who's responsible for the purse committee?
I was, I was actually going to ask you if Justin would volunteer.
Oh, okay. Justin, will you do it?
Yeah, for the community engagement one, I think that one would be. More, more my, in in my, uh, interest area and also with some of my connections. I I just wanted to mention that next month, I'm going to be, uh, out of the country, so I won't be at the next meeting, but I'm happy to. To help facilitate, um, before.
I'd, I'd like to work on that one, um, about getting the city buy-in to. Um, get the consultants set up. I'd like to work on that one, and I'd love it, Frank, if you were available to work on that.
I'll, I'll, I'll work with, I'll be your, 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 um, partner in grant, Gene.
Please, and and whoever else makes sense to join as well, but if if there's anyone else who wants to.
Well, it probably makes sense for me to be in the section for getting the consultants involved to see if we can get some municipal muscle behind it. So I'm, I'm willing to do that. Alex, you have your hand up?
Yes, I've wanted to add, uh, to include people with disabilities. In in this assessment, and, um, also the part that I'm interested in is the community engagement plan.
Okay, Alex, and, uh. Oh, we got Will, Roberta, and Charlie. You want to help with any of those two groups before the next meeting? Do any of you have time to do that?
Um, I can definitely help with the community engagement. I, like Justin, kind of feel like that's more, you know, in my wheelhouse, especially with what I do on a daily basis, too, so.
Okay. Cool.
The community engagement for Roberta.
Okay.
I think the complication with securing consultants. We're up against a very tight timeframe, and unless we know what we want the consultants to consult about, um. Which I think, you know, the people who are already volunteering for that, I think are well-placed to do that, but the rest of. Some of the rest of us, I think, would be wondering what we need consultants to do, which would take up time.
So the, um.
We don't have.
So if you take a look at the material I sent out, they have a a planning framework, and they do have. A series of things that they can actually provide us support on completing. Um, and they're also under a very tight timeframe to complete these municipal. Uh, uh, digital equity plans for NBI according to their timeline, so. Uh, I, my sense is, and I haven't been involved directly with them, I didn't know, know who they are. Uh, is that they're doing a pretty rapid process, so I don't think there's a lot of, of conversation. I think they will come with. Sort of a roadmap for us that will help us implement these steps. So that's my, that, that's my hope, um. They'll be able to do the work in between meetings that we won't be able to do because we're doing other stuff. But they will keep us moving in the right direction is my, is my hope.
Okay. All right, and Charlie, do you want to, do you have time for one of the working groups before the next, or?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'm engaged with.
Okay. All right.
That's if I just sort of back with one.
Yeah, so, uh, in terms of the group focusing on the consultants, that's Gene, Dr. Robinson, and myself. And then Justin, Alex, Will, Roberta, and Charlie will spend some time thinking about. Bullet number three, which is develop community engagement plan. So I think, basically, can you say a little bit more, Doctor, about what that? What that work product would look like in a first draft for them?
To me, to me, engagement plan?
Yeah.
So I mean, what, what I typically do, uh, is, is I do somewhat of a stakeholder analysis. I want to figure out. Uh, who I want to talk to, um, so, uh. There is, I'm not sure if it's in. This thing or not. I will send the committee a, um. An outline, a one pager, it's a picture. And the picture identifies what the grant identifies as priority groups for engagement. Uh, and so you won't be surprised at any of the labels that you see, but it will give you a a picture. And so I would, uh, say, how, the first question would be, how do I reach these different groups? What are the strategies that I might employ? Who are the stakeholders? Who do I need to know? Who knows somebody that knows somebody that can open a door? So they can have a conversation with, uh, those community members. And so I, I think that stakeholder analysis would probably be the first step I would do, and if you can do that. At your next meeting, then I think you're also setting up. The next steps for, uh, the consultants, so that we're actually working together, um. Uh, so stakeholder analysis would be the first, first step, and I could send you some material that identifies who the priority stakeholders are.
Are you, and this is, I haven't written a grant or a policy or a plan like this before, but when I think of the words, um. Community engagement plan, I'm envisioning like a one-page document that is produced that says. Here's how we propose to engage the community with bullets. Is that ultimately where it ends up?
That's ultimately, and, but the question is, which community?
Right.
So.
Who are you trying to?
Yeah, is it, is it, uh, community, those people living with disabilities? Is it, um, older adults? Uh, is it preschool-age families, uh, again, and that's, you know, early education cares. And so those are all different groups that require different ways of engaging them, so, um, uh, and so that would be. Uh, it could be maybe two pages of bullets. So by the time you break out those groups and figure out. Here's the two or three ways we can reach them, I think that would be, uh, a great, a great first start.
Okay, it sounds really good. So, because there's going to be five of you participating in this. Um, and because it is likely to result in some type of. Document of some sort, I think one of the five, if you could. Want somebody who's willing to volunteer to sort of be the coordinator and send the email to the other. To the other four and say, look, we're going to talk at this time and sort of be responsible to be the scribe for that group. Is any one of the five of you willing to do that?
I'd be a few people.
Could be two.
Coordinating one side.
Let's not all jump in at once here. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to, you know, work with someone else on doing that. Let's have two of us.
And Justin, you said you're not here, so Roberta, I'll, I'll work with you on that for sure.
Okay. And then I want, as an offshoot of that, Michael, I wanted to ask you. Um, do we need to, for meetings other than our monthly meeting? Do we need to use the council's Zoom? What, what are the?
No, it's not subject to open meeting law, so you can, can meet in your kitchen, you can meet on the phone, you can meet via email however you want.
Okay. I have, I have a Zoom account, so if others don't mind. I can set up those. That link for the meetings.
That's great.
Thank you, Roberta, perfect.
Okay. So, just a couple of other items. Um, I did get a question from Roberta since the last meeting about whether. The city has, uh, any approved or pending grant applications under the U.S. Commerce Department, National Telecommunications, and Information Administration. NTIA, that's a mouthful, administered programs. Um, and I did ask about this. And I'm not aware of any programs that the city has that are, uh. That are being funded currently or that are pending under that, uh, acronym and that organization that you cited, Roberta. So, it, and and the stakeholders that I asked at the city confirm that. If you want to discuss that further, or anybody has any insights about that, I'd, I'd welcome them if there's. If you have some reflection on that, if you think there's something we should be doing in that regard.
Actually, the, the deadline is like almost immediate, so I don't think we have the timeframe to initiate anything new. I, I just thought it would be important for us to know what might already. Be in the pipeline in terms of what the city is doing, so we don't duplicate, um, efforts that are out there.
Yeah, and Roberta, for your information, for the community's information, I think the state plan that's being developed is going to NTIA. I think these are the, uh, this is a federal agency that is going to actually. Receive the state plan, and that state plan will then be the basis for the allocation of additional resources back out to the community. So it's, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's the same, it's the same, uh, federal agency.
Sort of like federal ARPA received by the state, and then the state realizes it out of there.
So this is, this is money, this is money coming, I think it's out of the Infrastructure Act that just passed, and some other, and the, the, the. Digital Equity Act and the Infrastructure Act that just passed. Those funds, well, I'm not sure how it's going. But that, that's.
I was planning how it goes.
That, that's the, that's the bucket of money, so it's not ARPA, it's a different, different source, but I think NTIA. Is the federal agency that we will review the, the state plans. There's going to be a connection somewhere between the two. I'm not sure how it flows, but, uh, I recognize NTIA because we just heard from them about a week ago, so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the question, Roberta. And then, um, I guess. That's essentially it. Um, do we have any other items that folks wanted to cover today? Anything, did you end up meeting with Archbishop Timothy Paul?
Yeah, I did meet him, and I think I represented, you know, in terms of the planning process. Um, uh, we're, you know, uh, our conversations, uh, were, were set.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
I just added the Age Friendly Health and Tech Showcase that Frank was talking about earlier, um, into the chat. It's the thirty-first of May.
Thank you, thank you.
And Justin added, yeah, to the. The link as well. Thank you for doing that.
And Roberta, are you going to be there?
I'm sorry, am I going to be where?
Uh, the thirty-first of May at the.
The one at the senior center?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm still isolating. I still think, um, COVID is around.
Okay.
And I'm at high risk, but if they happen to have a virtual link, like what we're doing now, I can participate.
All right, I will check with them and see if that's, if that's the case.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all, and thank you to everybody for volunteering for these extra homework assignments before our next meeting. Our next meeting is on June fourteenth at six o'clock. And I think the only two new agenda items we'll have are to be to report back from the two committees on. The, uh, planning consultants and, uh, the second committee regarding the community engagement plan. Thank you, and Justin, have a good time wherever you're headed.
Thanks.
All right, bye, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Hi, thanks all.